My kids had more candy by the time they get to first grade than I did my entire childhood.
Welcome and bring them more.
I just struggle like I remember like the kids would come home like first grade have a pocket of candy like. The teachers are giving me candy. What world are we living in?
Only if you get it.
Well, still.
Logan went to that a couple of years ago with his friend. And then so he's walking down like scared and he got him and the guy's like you got it loaded like he brought the. They weren't ready for that.
All right, let's get started. We're calling meeting in order.
Politicians. United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I certify that the meeting has been duly noticed. Um, who called?
All present.
All present. Need approval, need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion. A second.
Motion by Becca, second by Chrissy. All in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a public comment. Robin, let you go first.
Thank you. I have been at several of the last board meetings listening to the the discussion about library books in this district. My hope is that tonight, action can be made regarding the issue that will finally lay it to rest. A big deal was made about a book called Dear Martin and how inappropriate it was. Part of the book was read that was deemed inappropriate. What was left out was the part where the main character told his friends that what he said was inappropriate, that it was disrespectful. Why was that part left out? Isn't that what we want? To empower our students to do the right thing. If we are going to throw a book out over a snippet from the text, then maybe we should throw out the songs that were played at the Friday night football game. Some of the lyrics were inappropriate, to say the least. One song was Wrong Way by Sublime, and there were other inappropriate lyrics from other songs played. These songs were played for all to hear at a football game. How is this appropriate? The fact is, there is only one person that can legally order books in this district. Mr. Kotek has the training, the credentials, the expertise, and the background to do this. Anyone else who thinks they should be a part of deciding what books to have in this public school is flat out mistaken. What you have is an opinion. An opinion does not legally allow you to obtain the books for this public school district. An opinion doesn't make you an expert or qualified. As far as I know, not one single reconsideration process has been started for any book. There is a process in place for books someone has an issue with. To be blunt, this isn't about books. This is about politics. If you have a problem with three, four, or five books, well, no process is perfect, so start the reconsideration process. If you have a problem with thirty, forty, or fifty books, the problem isn't the books. It is very possibly you. Please broaden your mind and be more accepting of diversity. Finally, Mr. Kotek has criteria that he follows when choosing books. Who will choose this unqualified committee? Will it be a subjective process? What criteria will be used to select books? Is there a rubric, a checklist? I would like to see that rubric or checklist. I would like the public to see what criteria this committee will use to select books. I would also like the school lawyer to see the rubric or the criteria that this committee would use. As a teacher in this district, I would like to see this issue resolved. As a public school, we are obligated to every child in this district. Thank you.
Ooh.
That was.
That was spot on.
Thanks, Robin. Um, I have one letter here from Casey Yeager. That I would read, um, kind of on the same subject of the library. Says, Dear Cadet Community School Board Members and Administrators, thank you for your dedication to the school district and the community. As a parent of five children in the district and a former Cadet elementary teacher, I share your desire to educate the students in our community in a way that would create lifelong learners who make positive contributions to society. After much thought, I want to reach out and have my voice be heard in regards to one of the agenda topics for this evening, the library policy. Including library content and book selection. My two oldest children are now in school, so I felt that it was important for me to educate myself on what my children are going to be exposed to while at school. Upon doing my own search of the school library database, I became quite concerned with some of the books that were already in the elementary library. There were a number of controversial topics that I feel have no place in school, especially within the reach of our youngest students. I took the liberty of reading a number of the books on the list and was disgusted, put it mildly. Thank you, or thankfully, the school board meetings are now being recorded so that those of us who cannot attend are still able to know what is being said. A few weeks, weeks ago, I listened to Mr. Lanu read an excerpt from Dear Martin. This is one of the books that I personally read. It was filled with so many swear words and such lewd sexual content that when I started to put post notes on the pages with inappropriate lines, nearly every page was flagged. I felt uncomfortable reading it as an adult. And we are going to, and we are going to promote this type of content and behavior by allowing our youth to check out and read it without parental guidance. I encourage each of you to just read a few pages. You quickly realize that there are more than just a few lines that are explicit in this book. We cannot accept this. Although written with much passion and emotion, to be tolerated and emotion to be tolerated at our school. It glorifies behaviors that degrade women, among other things. The system of the book selection is clearly flawed when a book such as this is able to make it into, onto our library shelves. But what troubles me more is that some people are defending this type of writing as appropriate in school. Our own student handbook shows no tolerance for students saying or writing the same content in school. Yet it is acceptable for them to read it in our own library books. We clearly need to reevaluate the way books are being selected for our students, for it is important and should not be shrugged off. I suggest that the district assemble team, a team of individuals, including a number of parents, to join the library media specialist, Mr. Kotek, in book selection. He would make the final approval as rules required, but it will only be after others' voices are heard. I'm sure there's abundance of parents who would appreciate being part of this, despite concern. It would not, it would not have to take away from the teachers, other duties that relates to the district strategic plan. So that's pretty much it. Okay. Thank you, Casey. Uh, I need a, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Chrissy, second by Donna. All in favor? Aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're up to you.
Um, so we have, uh, one of the things, as you know, we've worked on is trying to spotlight some of the things that are happening in our schools. And so at the last meeting, we talked about summer school at the elementary. All of our secondary staff took part, um, in some Kagan training, this in service before school started. And so we've got Caleb and Ellie Nightfeld who are gonna share some information.
Where do you want to stand, Jenny?
Wherever you fit for you.
I guess we'll go right here.
Okay, sure.
Okay, so, um, this year, for the last, um, I guess my first year here, um, I inherited what is deemed a block schedule. Um, we ran two days of block, um, my first year. Um, and then, uh, my second year, I was blessed with COVID. So we decided to run block full time to, um, do some social distancing and whatnot. Throughout my, um, time here, teachers have always kind of said like, you know, the block isn't bad necessarily. We just, you know, we really want to learn how. And they had been running it, you know, well before I got here. So Jenny and I put our heads together, um, over about a year and decided that we would adopt what is called a Kagan Structure Cooperative Learning System, uh, where we would train our teachers how to actually teach in the block. Go ahead. Can you go back one? Uh, so cooperative learning, um, Kagan structures are part of cooperative learning. Uh, what is cooperative learning? It's the process of breaking a classroom of students into small groups so they can discover and learn new concepts together to help each other. And what are Kagan structures? Uh, these are instructional strategies designed to promote cooperation and communication in the classroom. They also boost students' confidence, um, and help them retain interest in classroom interaction. Uh, historically, you guys, when you were in school, when I was in school, when Ms. Nightfeld was in school, we did what was called group work. Um, a lot of group work, if you recall, um, typically, one student, um, who really wants, uh, the best grade will take on a lot of the work. Um, and it is a divide and conquer mentality, uh, which then enables some free riders to kind of hang out and get a grade. Doesn't necessarily require interactions. Um, it's kind of up to the group and however the teacher tries to facilitate that. Uh, helping and sharing is more of a process of, of doing and giving than, um, the sharing. And the emphasis is typically on that product at the end. What does that product look like? Cooperative learning, uh, it requires a group effort. Um, everybody participates. Um, it helps hold each other accountable. It also improves social skills. Uh, helping and sharing is encouraged. And the emphasis that, that we've learned is on the process of what you're doing, not always the end result. To give you a little bit of an example, this is about a four-minute clip, um, of the Kagan structures, uh, which we were fortunate to have a Kagan teacher, um, presenter come into our in-service this year. Um, we had fifty-five staff, I believe, partake in it. Um, I would say forty-nine of the fifty-two, uh, gave great reviews on the training and, and many teachers told me it was one of the best they've ever had, um, in all of their in-service time. So we were very thankful that it worked well. Um, we actually have a second day coming up in February where they will come in and watch our teachers teach. And then the next day is in-service, then they'll actually meet with our teachers and help them, um, with another day of coaching to, to kind of show them what they did and, and how they could, could be improved. So feel free to go ahead there, Jen.
A revolutionary approach to teaching that actively engages every student. Let's look at the problems traditional teaching creates. Students sit in rows. The rule is no talking. The teacher presents new information or a new skill. To engage students, the teacher asks the class a question. One student responds at a time. Sounds familiar, doesn't it? So what's wrong with that? The first problem is we set our students against each other. When the teacher calls on Peter to answer, Suzie lowers her hand in disappointment. But when Peter begins to falter, she shoots her hand back up, waves it wildly. Pick me, teacher! A subset of students compete for the opportunity to shine. A competitive class is not a brain-friendly learning environment. The next problem is students spend very little time actively engaged. The teacher is doing most of the talking most of the time. When we finally do engage students, it's one at a time. It's like being in a long line waiting to be served. A big percent of the class is somewhere between mildly interested and comatose. Many students don't want to turn. They feel they can't or don't want to compete. Johnny is shy. Monica is lower achieving. Juan is still learning English. These students don't want to be singled out. Don't call on me. They hide. They opt out. It's no wonder we have an achievement gap. Traditional teaching engages some of the class, but many students can easily slip through the cracks. Kagan engages all students. We turn things around, literally. Instead of facing the back of a classmate's head, we turn students around to face each other. Instead of calling on one student at a time, we can call on all students. Using the Kagan structure timed pair share, the teacher asks a question. In pairs, partner A shares for thirty seconds, then partner B shares for thirty seconds. Everyone has a turn. Sharing with a partner is safe. There's no need to hide. In just a little over a minute, we engage every student. In the same amount of time, the traditional class, we engage one student. What's better, engage one student or engage every student? Absolutely right. Everyone learns more. It's not just the amount of engagement that matters. It also matters how we engage students. With Kagan structures, we engage students with interactive pair and team structures. While students master academic curriculum, they develop essential social skills. They learn teamwork skills. They develop communication skills. They practice leadership skills. These are the very college and career readiness skills our standards call for. In teams, students are no longer isolated or competing against each other. They celebrate each other's successes. They are on the same side. Cooperation leads to kinder and more caring kids. We create buddies, not bullies. Kagan's simple yet powerful structures transform education. In numbered heads together, teammates put their heads together to review. Everyone is more active and the content becomes more memorable. In quiz-quiz trade, students repeatedly quiz classmates. They have so much more fun being up and active than working alone. In rally coach, partners solve problems together. Instead of independent practice, students have a peer to coach them and provide immediate feedback. Why teach the traditional way when we have so many alternatives to engage every student? Kagan isn't something we think might work. Kagan is scientifically researched base. Hundreds of studies on cooperative learning show tremendous academic and social gains over traditional life. With Kagan, teachers are engaging their disengaged students. Struggling schools are making dramatic gains. Entire districts are raising their test scores. Kagan works. Kagan works because Kagan creates full engagement for every student. Engaged students aren't bored or disruptive. Engaged students enjoy school more. Engaged students learn more. Kagan, it's all about engagement.
So some of the Kagan structures that we use, uh, so with the first, um, training, we really were given about four structures. Now, Kagan has well over a hundred structures that they can teach you how to use. Um, there's four basic ones, um, that we kind of all learned together. Um, my staff and I, we all kind of spent a full day learning these four. Uh, we're in week five of this, people, so, um, you know, we have yet to see all of the gains that they may have shared here. Um, but, um, we're excited about what it's doing for us so far. So if you click Jenny, here's just a few of the things that we use. Um, Ellie, I'll let you talk a little bit about some of these if you don't mind.
I will. Um, so I'm Ellie Nightfeld. If you don't know me, I teach social studies. Uh, I have some eighth grade students this year, all the way up to our AP US history, um, students. And I've been using these like right off the bat, more so to get to know some of these kids, um, that I haven't had. So the sophomore group that I have in, in regular US history and then my eighth graders. And I get groans from the sophomores, but the eighth graders are willing to play the game and I think they're starting to like it. I've noticed, um, my, my tables used to be in like a horseshoe format and I moved them into the, um, the pods or the students look at each other. And it does increase talking, but that's what I wanted anyway. Uh, and I think this just helps focus them. So when we do like a rally robin, um, I kind of call this rapid fire, um, where the kids share back and forth, uh, like a list of activities. In the training, we were taught they have this really cheesy music and sometimes I use a really cheesy music and the kids kind of giggle. And then sometimes I try to pick like a more popular song, it's a little more upbeat. And so you get the heads bobbing, you know, a little happy or some kind of pop song. Um, and I try to vary it up. Sometimes I, I'm better at it than others. Um, I try to hit, hit it at least once a week, uh, with, with every class, whether it's a, a fun or a content based. Um, it doesn't take that much time over the day. I really enjoy it. I probably use the time pair share the most. Uh, where I give the kids a specific question, um, and I really emphasize to the kids that their opinion matters. And so even my hesitant students, my really quiet students, um, they'll be a little brave, especially when I'm like right by them, waiting for them to talk to their partner. Um, and it gives me a chance to kind of mix and bop around the room. I feel like a pinball sometimes, but it's great for my step count. So the kids seem to be obviously more engaged like we wanted them to be. And then I can still do a, let's bring it all back and then let's repeat and kind of re-review what we heard. And I have even my more shy students willing to participate as a full group. So they're willing to kind of be the one-on-one, like I'll, I'll be brave. Um, and I use that phrase a lot. I'm like, let's, let's be brave, kids. Let's talk about one or two things, just so everybody hears another thing, maybe your partner shared or. And I said, if you don't think your answer was good, you can say your partner's answer. And so sometimes they, they do. They'll, they'll tell their partners and then of us and they'll just say their answers.
It also gives, um, you know, students who are, are more shy and don't want to initially make the first effort at raising their hand in front of everybody, gives the teacher a time to walk around the room and, and give feedback to the answer when they hear them talking. So then that kid has a little more confidence that yes, what I said was in fact correct.
Yeah, I've got a couple of kids where I'm like, oh, that was so good. You gotta say that. And they're like, okay. So then I'm like, you know, they might not be there, but they're kind of looking at me and I'm like, yeah, you should, you should say it. And so I've gotten a couple of kids to, to say that. And so I do feel, um, this is gonna be really good. And I even was telling Caleb, I said, you know, I was like all in. I was so engaged at in-service. And I said it was the best in-service I've ever been to. This is my love in your teaching. Um, and so I do feel like this is gonna be good. Um, I need a little more practice with it still. Um, we've got some really great resources. I would love to like pour over them, but you know, I'm busy with some other things. So, uh, as I try to find time during prep or, you know, kind of peruse on a weekend, it's, you know, I'm, I'm interested and I want to push more. Um, but I'm trying to get good with the practice versions of some of these. So when I want to put the content to them, it's not as, as challenging to say, okay, this is how we do it. So, I mean, it's, it's a learning curve. I know not, not everybody's as confident and willing to try, but I, I, I think we need to continue to work. And I know I'm excited about having them come back and having them come see us because I feel that without that accountability hold, then it wasn't worth it. So I feel like this is a good thing and one of the best things we've done. So.
We also, you know, we, we do know that a ninety-minute block gets long. So some of these, I know in a math class I was in the other day, um, Mr. Mendemeyer has written the middle of his block. Um, he calls it CB Class Builder. So he uses one of these every day, no matter what, where they break up their block, just to do a class builder. They get up, they walk around, they, they find a partner, um, and then they, they kind of have some team building that way. One of the things that wasn't fully explained here is the process of how you pair kids up. Um, there's definitely a science to who sits by who and who sits across from one another. Um, so the teachers throughout this year will learn, um, who sits where and who should be an A and who should be a B and who should be, um, sitting diagonal from each other, that kind of stuff. So it's, um, there's research behind that as well. Um, any questions? You can go back that one more. Any questions on, um, Kagan structures? Cause after this, I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail of similar stuff we're doing. Or questions for Ms. Nightfeld?
So everybody that went to this first training, are they all doing something like this or is everyone just kind of working their way towards it?
I think, I think we're kind of working our way towards it. I mean, I'm like, I was like, I'm gonna just do this and I'm just gonna keep trying to practice this. And I, I talked with a few people that I know are, are trying to do the same. Um, but I, I think some people are a little more hesitant. Um, you know, understanding like how to feel comfortable with it. Um, I mean, if I was a brand-new teacher, this would be like just another pile. And so I, I do feel like, you know, having maybe some in-service time even on, on Monday, like a minute or two to like collaborate, you know, a little bit. But I mean, we, we've talked about this with, with our PLCs and so I'm not in everybody else's PLC. I can't speak for them. But I mean, I think people are, are willing to give it a, a little try, even if it's just the basic like class builder or team builder stuff. And that's a lot of the stuff I'm trying to utilize too, so the kids don't feel self-conscious, so they feel comfortable with the people they're with.
The goal of this is that eventually it gets to be so routine that it's quick. Um, we're talking like people have a minute to do think pair share or time pair share. They have a minute to think. They have thirty seconds to share per partner, then we're getting back, we're in a full group. So it's kind of slow to go fast here, uh, but the goal would be that a, a teacher could use three or four of these in one class period. And just kind of roll through it without having to set up anything. Um, with Kagan, we got specific software that went on our computers. So they all have a timer, they have the cheesy music, they have, um, a template to make kind of the, um, the visuals for it. So, um, all of that is set, set up for the staff. So perhaps some in-service time to play with it might be good.
One or two minutes?
Yep.
Is the plan to try to get all of your staff doing something with this?
Yep, and I, I, like, I'm doing a lot more coaching in the classes than I ever have. And part of a, a shift in, in me was to get, if I'm in my office, open door policy is, was, was hard because then someone would come talk to me twenty-five minutes when I should be in the classroom for twenty-five minutes. So Rhonda and I have really shifted my calendar, so people have to make appointments. So I'm in classes more. So I've told staff like, I'm gonna pop in randomly, but hey, you know, if you have a Kagan structure that you want me to see, I'd love to see it. Um, and most people I've talked to when I, um, do their post observations, they're like, yep, I use it. You just didn't see it today. Um, we'd love to show you it. So, yeah, it definitely will be a thing for everybody. All right. So with this, um, we've also shifted our mindset at the high school, middle school, or junior, senior high. Sorry, I'm still, I still get stuck in that. Um, it was always cash in middle school, high school, so. Service is love made visible. We've shifted our mindset to being customer service at this school. We, um, talk about it at every staff meeting. I'll talk about it tomorrow. Every Monday, staff gets an update from me on what hospitality and customer service can do for our people and everybody that comes in our building. Uh, we talked a lot about that service is really just love, um, made visible. So if we want kids to feel good here, we have to treat them well, um, and that is how we show them love. Next one? So our culture shift, customer service hospitality. We want to be positive, nice, respectful. Uh, we want to provide a great experience to what we consider our customers, which would be our students and our people entering our building. Uh, we want to seek out ways to greet our students, um, and make our school a place where students want to be. What we did is we looked at two places, um, this, uh, in-service, we looked at Quick Trip and Festival. Uh, we often say, why do people want to go to Quick Trip instead of going to somewhere else? Um, it's pretty, quick, people say, it's clean at Quick Trip. Uh, everybody treats me good whenever I go there. I never leave Quick Trip mad. Uh, we don't want people to leave our school mad. We don't want parents to, to be upset when they leave here. Um, if we have someone come in the office, I want to be there to greet them and make them feel comfortable. Uh, if they're frustrated, I want them to leave my office knowing that I care about them and I care about what they, what they had to say. Um, same thing if we have a, a teacher with a parent. We want that parent to feel like this is a good place. My, my kid is safe here. Um, this teacher cares about my kid. Uh, Festival Foods, how do we bring people back? How do we bring people into our store? Uh, Festival has a, has a mission about the boomerang. Um, if you treat someone well, they're gonna come back. So one thing that we want is for people to know that we're gonna treat you well and hopefully you come back, um, next year. So what we did is we put a motto together, um, as a staff. Uh, we want to focus on the good stuff. I think sometimes we get caught up in negativity. Uh, so one thing, instead of focusing on the bad things that happen in our lives, in our school, in our day, when you go into a coworker's classroom at the end of the day, instead of immediately talking about what didn't go well, let's focus on the good stuff. Uh, we all want to show up every day. We need each other. Um, and when it gets hard, we want to push together. We did make a new, um, vision statement for our school. Uh, we will work together to provide a great experience for everyone and make a positive impact in each child's life. Uh, so that is kind of, uh, what our motto has been. Uh, it's been five weeks, I think, our staff, uh, from my perception. Uh, it's just me, but, um, I felt every day coming to work is a better day than it was last year. Um, I feel like my staff is generally happier to be here. Kids are generally happier. Now, whether that was just shifting in the mask pandemic to now, or it's just that we're all a little bit more positive, I don't know. But it, it certainly feels better to be at work this year than it did last year. Anything to bring me up on this?
Lot less stress, I would say. And it, it does seem like the kids are more positive. And I don't know if they're just really happy to be back, uh, and being able to do the fun stuff like homecoming and, you know, the dress-up days. And I, I feel like the, the kids have an overall more positive. But I don't know if some of it, like the Kagan structure stuff, like they just seem to be more willing to participate in class and, uh, I notice more engagement. And, uh, I notice more engagement and I just have a really good group of kids and it, they make me happy and so, and it's kind of been a good day. Good to hear.
Any questions for us?
I got a question. For Kagan?
Yep.
I'm, let's just say when we're, are we in like unit one, two, three, four, most of our core classes? So let's just say social studies, are you on unit one still?
Two. We're almost testing two.
Most, most of it has.
Yeah, I'm in my third unit.
Most of it, at least one summative, if not working on their second.
Have you done any comparative on last year versus this year where we are with Kagan?
Like, uh, assessment scores?
Yeah, and you, so unit one from last year to this year?
Different group of kids, different strategies. Couldn't, I couldn't even compare apples to pears, cause that's what it is. Now, if I look at unit one and I look at unit two, I'm excited to see my unit twos to see if these strategies are helping these kids get the content better. But my kids, well, I didn't have eighth grade last year, but like my sophomores last year, if I looked at their scores from that first summative, we were basically at home virtual. So it was a completely different situation, completely different, like I say, group of kids. There's no way I could compare that.
But I think like, um, some of our junior high teachers that have the same kind of, you know, different kids, but similar content. I'm I'm sure informally, people could kind of gather whether it's working or not. Um, and I we probably could look at exact data. I don't know if they have the data from specific scores, but, um, perhaps some people would.
And I know this year we're doing summative assessment. And so I feel like we have more track and more more specific guidance on it. Where we could look at our our core group of kids that we have, where we could see how they did unit one. And then with the implementation of more of the structures, we get comfortable to see how they score. I think that would be, uh, an actual comparison we can make.
I think so. And the only other comment I would make is because it's it's, like Caleb said, it's not super efficient yet. The teachers are learning, the kids are learning as we get into that February in-service where they have more coaching and get a little bit more fluid. Because the other thing that happens in districts is once the kids have those structures in every class, they know what it is, like, oh, yeah, and boom, it just goes a lot quicker. Um, then I think, not that, not that we can't compare, I just wouldn't want to make a high stakes yes no decision yet when we're just learning it.
I think the second in-service, the second training will be big for us to to, um, really push forward with. Uh, often, and this is any job, but if you put something new in, a new initiative, new boss comes in, people just kind of generally just like wait for it to fizzle out because someone else is gonna come in and do something different or, you know. But we've stuck in my three years now to pretty much everything that that I said we were gonna do. We've pretty much continued on with things and I think staff understand that, that they're, they know this isn't gonna go away. XLT isn't gonna go away, we just have to make it better and we have to fix things that we're not doing well. And, um, that's been nice, that, um, I think consistency for this building so far with me. Um, the staff is generally the same staff that I got my first year. Um, we've made some positive changes in staffing and I think we're excited about, um, where it's gonna go for the next, you know, three, four years. And, um, seeing how this will work for the next two years is important for us.
So long term with the Kagan, um, company, is that something that they recommend you do in servicing every year or is it?
It would be like a refresher based system. Um, there's five days of coaching that they recommend all schools do. Um, we would do two for sure and then see how that goes. But then after that, it would kind of be like a, um, every couple of years. One thing that we wanted to make sure that we do, um, have a good handle on is if we do have new staff coming in, how to onboard them with the training of what we're doing. Because often, I think that get, that part gets missed a little bit. I think colleges right now prepare our teachers well, um, from like a mindfulness standpoint. But, you know, this stuff isn't getting taught at colleges right now either, and it should be, but it's just not. So some of that falls on us to help people out, um, that come into our level with what we do here to to see results.
So Caleb, do you think, like, you would personally be the, I'll say the Kagan specialist when it comes to that, or is it everybody?
Well, the goal would be that our instructional coach really, um, gets to be, you know, kind of, uh, our our Kagan person. Um, when she goes into classrooms, can help new teachers learn the system. But my kind of push to continue it needs to happen in all of the classes or people just won't do it, you know. And my being visible with them and practicing with them, like every staff meeting, we do a Kagan structure. Um, I get uncomfortable having to do it, um, but I did the, I I have it set up for tomorrow. So we'll do a Kagan structure together in the morning, um, just so that they know that I'm also learning it and we're gonna do it together.
I think another big takeaway too, like when we do them, even though they're sometimes kind of cheesy, it it's just, it's a ice breaker. It's, uh, it's a mind breaker. It gets you focused, it gets you in the here and now. So it does play, I think, into a lot of mindfulness strategies, which we've also talked about here. Um, and so like a- at our staff meeting, when we do whatever last week, it was read Truson a lie or to Truson a lie. And so it just got everybody to think about it, laugh a little, smile a little, and then I think everybody was way more ready to focus. And so I've noticed that with the kids too.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, elementary unloading feedback, there was a survey that was done at the elementary last week, just around, and it actually kind of started with with the COVID last school year around kind of the loading unloading. Um, and just an invitation for parents to weigh in, and I think there were five responses. All of them were very positive. One just said they'd ever used it. Um, most of them were about it being safer for kids. Um, the one looked for improvement and already that's been addressed in the new weekly buzz is if you parked in this land in spots, then you, it's true, you can't really get out until everybody's done. So they've talked to parents about if you if you're gonna do that and want to get out, if you're better off parking across on the end. Um, so part of it is communication around that, but just wanted to kind of do a check in with that. Any specific questions on that? Um, and then.
Sorry, was that in the weekly buzz?
Yes.
That survey, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Um, these are just some number updates. So summer school counts. Um, so what happens in summer school is for everything that has a, um, like a teacher instruction. So all of the things they talked about at the elementary summer school at the last board meeting, um, you see a list of the things here. It goes by daily attendance. How many students attend each day and by the minute, how many minutes do they attend? And then Karita does this big calculation that comes to FTE, your full-time equivalent, which then you'll find out next week at the annual meeting, how does that incorporate into our membership account, um, counts? Um, so for last summer, it's, we still aren't quite back to where we were. Typically, pre-COVID, our summer school counts were around eighteen. Um, but we're at fourteen, which is great, cause the year, the summer before, we were at one, I believe. Um, so just wanted to kind of report that out. And you can see, there's tabs on the bottom. Um, so yes, last year was just one, and then the year before, I believe, was eighteen, yes. So that's something as we go forward, um, I've asked for staff input. I'll talk a little bit next week at the annual meeting about community input. When we have, we do have some federal, um, they call it ESSER dollars, which is money connected to COVID. For, and a couple of the things that that can be used for, and one of them is expanding summer school, providing transportation, providing additional opportunities for students. And so for us, we think that's a win-win if we start to look at, can we expand, especially some of the elementary opportunities into that secondary level? Um, and look at how we can do some things with that. Any questions on summer school?
Uh, is there, I was just looking at the, like, the number of things offered.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, back in eighteen, there was like three more things?
Yes.
More things. Is there plans to try to offer more or just try to get students in the stuff we have?
I would say there's, there's plans that would be to expand it, and that's part of that. Is some, we could, we would have some funding that we could even encourage teachers, give them some time for planning ahead. Cause sometimes that's hard if you want to do something brand new. Um, but yeah, so part of it is expanding the grade levels, but then even what are we offering that kids might want to be connected to? And you'll see there, some of them are somewhat recreational, like the swimming lessons, um, and those types of things, those still count.
What are roadblocks? Is it finding teachers to do the summer school classes or?
That's been part of it, I would say, especially, um, you know, one of the maybe unintended consequences of COVID is people are a little bit tired out by the time spring comes and and even, we can have outside staff, but they still, you do have to have a certified teacher to be able to count it. So it couldn't be, we could have, if it was a community member, we would need a teacher still there to be able to count it for this. So that does get to be an issue.
We will, and we'll, we talk about next meeting, what fourteen means to our budget?
Yeah, so actually, we'll talk about it, yes, at the annual meeting, cause you'll see the whole revenue limit worksheet where that factors in.
Okay. I mean, the only other report I have is I see weightlifting on there, but that's something that, I don't even know if people even know that's part of the summer school thing. Like, I sort of was thinking of one, but it really, I don't know if a lot of people would do so. How do we advertise and try to attract kids to this?
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know.
No, I think that's a good point. I mean, part of it is trying to expand it, but then the other part is how do we, how can we promote what there is?
And is that ran through the folks we hired for weightlifting?
Yes, and so we're able to count that because that person happens to have a teaching license.
I know I mentioned that to him when I, when he gave us that presentation a few months ago, that
Yes.
I had a junior high student that was except for really able to go, but she never once mentioned that it was an option. Maybe she didn't tell me her purpose, but, um, so I just thought, yeah, if they could promote that more in all sports or just even kids that aren't in an organized sport that might still be interested in going.
Yes.
I feel like if we're hiring somebody in there, we'll be, take ownership of that, we should like see that number to get the community increase.
That could go on our weekly.
Yes. Well, and then kind of like every example, sometimes, I mean, we send information out to parents, but maybe something more specific so that we don't just count on students to relay the message as well. For any of it. And I think, cause it's new, like, I feel like swimming lessons, people are used to, cause that's been around for a really long time.
Yeah.
But many of these things are newer.
If we could, uh, capture, so weightlifting seems like it, uh, it's weightlifting, it limits the number of people. But he does like aerobics or something too, like, or let's just say girls on the run, right?
Yes.
Captures a bunch of elementary school kids, but could we factor something like that into?
As long as.
A running thing into that and maybe it's the way we name it or what would happen.
Yep, as long as we have it under that umbrella with a certified person, it it's actually one of the things that's fairly flexible.
Yeah, I think how you pitch it is huge at not being intimidating to kids that aren't experienced.
Right.
I, uh, we have a group of people that meet for that, um, we have an activities group or something that meet.
Yes, there's a, there's a steering committee.
Yeah. Maybe that can be part of it.
And that could be something that they probably look at, cause that's got a pretty wide variety of people on it. Parents and some coaches and advisors.
I feel like the band one really dropped off too. That used to be a lot bigger.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and especially like this year, cause now there's, it's only one band class, right? We took away.
Well, there's, they're combined, but then we also, because we added the, um, kind of, it's not music, pretty general music.
Yeah.
Um, because of that change with seventh and eighth grade, cause we needed another piece there.
So maybe there's something in there. I know, you know, guitar playing really picked up around here, maybe there's that or something there for.
I think there could be some potential there as well.
And I feel like, maybe it was before twenty nineteen, I feel like summer volleyball used to get counted into this.
It, it's possible, depending on who ran it, if it was a teacher or not. I don't know, cause I wasn't here.
It was Mr. Hanson.
So that sometimes makes a difference.
So what is band prep? Like, is that like this extra band for the kids in summer or what is?
Yeah, so you, I mean, kind of like lessons other than, like this year, because they were, I would say, kind of connected to neighbor day. So it wasn't always individual lessons. It might have been your group of whatever your kind of musical instrument was.
I feel like you almost used to focus on like seventh or eighth graders that are gonna be moving up, like getting them ready for high school band and doing some.
Yes. But it had, it's, it's not like teacher prep, like it has to include student instruction.
Right, right. I I just had that two kids in band, but I'd never heard of this, so I, so, I understand.
Kind of back to that communication piece.
Definitely.
Good feedback. Yeah, I think you have, there could be a flyer or some kind, I guess, that's probably more of like a Google Doc. But something that's sent out and even just to find out interest from families. And you said you were thinking about bringing that up at the annual meeting?
Right, well, and that's kind of broader because we're, we want to try to get input on like how do we spend those dollars. But that's something that we feel like would be a wise expenditure because it's, it also then helps our numbers and helps keeps kids connected.
But I guess just making sure that we're capturing all the people that would have interest. I'm guessing a big hindrance is transportation, but, you know, just letting you know these are all options in the summer.
And we did, I mean, that's one of the things that we've used that money for is to provide transportation, because that has been a barrier. The other thing that we did kind of experiment with the elementary and our signup wasn't as strong as it was, but our attendance was better, was having something that was a little bit longer date. Um, so someone didn't have to try to coordinate like they're done after lunch and I gotta find childcare now. Like, it it, it went till either two or two thirty. And that seemed to be a positive. Um, so September count, so twice a year, um, for fiscal reasons actually, which doesn't always sound like it makes sense. There, during the third Friday in September and the second Friday in January, we do a count of our, and of what, and it's called kind of a head count of who's coming to school here. Um, because that's part of what looks at our membership. Our membership is kids who who live here, even if they open and roll out, and then kind of head counts who comes here. And the idea is we want to increase those numbers just because fiscally that helps us. So you'll see, I gave you kind of the last three Septembers, our count for this September is eight fifty. Karita's the one that does all of the work on that, and it's a lot more complicated than you think. I mean, they have to, like, if there, if someone's open enrolled, you know, we have to agree that you're, who's counting them and, you know, all of that between schools, all of that has, that database has to align. So you'll see that's the count, and then when you look at open enrollment, so that one is a little bit interesting. Our open enrollment in increased again, so that's increased three years in a row, but the open enrollment out also increased. Um, and if people don't always provide reasons for that, we did a survey a few years ago. We've talked about we could reach out to families again and ask kind of why they chose to do that. And then the other is just students in E succeed, so that, um, the board has an idea of of that. And so this will also be part of that revenue limit worksheet that we talked about next week. That's because what it does is takes three years of your student counts and three years of your summer school and puts them into a formula that then will say, it'll talk about, here's your state aid and then here's your revenue limit. And then the in-between is part where your tax levy comes in.
Maybe you want to mention the numbers for the livestream about the number of kids that are, uh, succeed?
Yes, so, um, E succeed, we have sixteen this year that are enrolled in E succeed. Last year was sixty-five, the year before it wasn't an option for students.
That's full-time students.
Yes, and yes, those are full-time students, not, we have students, um, at the secondary level just taking a course. Those students are counted up above.
Do we have a sense of why our open enrollment out increased so much this year as compared to previous years?
Um, I don't, I don't know. Karita, do you have anything?
There's quite a few 4K kids, so I'm guessing a lot of that is they're doing 4K at their daycare. So there's quite a few of those. Um, there was definitely several kids who must have moved into the district, but kept going to school where they were already going to school.
Correct.
Some of that might have been that development kind of between here and Chippewa Falls. Um, I do know 4K in Chippewa Falls, all of it is in childcare centers, not in the school at all. So then kids don't go, you don't transfer anywhere else. That's just where you are. It's just part of it's funded, part of it is parent funded.
I know it's kind of a hard question to answer, I might ask it anyway. Um, do we have a sense of like, or do we see any trends, like kids are here for like elementary, but then they open and roll out when they get to high school or vice versa? Do we kind of see that pattern? I'm just curious if we see a pattern as kids kind of go through the district a little bit, they get to a certain stage and then there's just kind of all over. I know it's a really hard question to answer.
I haven't seen a pattern like that, no, not, not really at all. In fact, a lot of, I mean, some of the kids that are open enrolled out have been open enrolled out, like at the same names every year. You know, a lot of them are the same. You know, a lot of them are the same kids, and they've been that way since they were in elementary. And now they're in high school, but no, I haven't seen a trend where it's certain ages or anything.
Okay. Is there any one district they open and roll out to more often than not, or?
Um, I would say most, I mean, I'd have to look and see which one is the most, but I would say it would be between Chippewa and Stanley probably.
Other questions? So again, the, stay tuned, next week we'll kind of get more in detail with all of this connected to a revenue limit worksheet. Um, which will kind of then connect to our budget for the year. Um, and then I just, again, I'm gonna share out the all-time best, and I'm glad that Robin is here, because she has two of them on there. Eighty-eight percent of her students scored seventy percent or higher on the weekly reading test in all-time best. And then earned a hundred and twenty-four marbles for acts of kindness for September, highest number that any previous year students have earned for that first month of school. So that's exactly what all-time best is about. It's just better than it's ever been done. Six students in Kotex class had thirty multiplication problems with a hundred percent accuracy, and there were many other students only missed one or two. Uh, Kanat FFA at World Dairy Expo for DeGrande students took third out of thirty-second, thirty-two places. And individual students took fourth, fifth, and twenty-ninth, um, first time they've ever competed in that contest at all. And Hornet Hoopsters, over ninety students attended, um, their last clinic with seven more clinics to go again, some the highest attendance. So we really encourage people to share this, um, because when we think about continuous improvement, goal setting, the whole idea is doing something more or better than you've ever been able to do it before, so we're excited about that. Um, talking about strategic planning, um, I talked about the scorecard at the committee meeting, but this is something that the board will look at later in the agenda for approval. And one of the things we've done is just sort of changed the format partially so that we always see that five-year goal. So we redid the strategic plan, um, so you'll see the one-year goal just says approve your Wisconsin State Report Card rating from the twenty-twenty-one results. And then these are our strategic actions. These are the things we're gonna do to get there. And then it kind of in the shaded area is when you'll see later, there'll be some reporting out to the board. And just to see on the far right, um, to help us keep our eye on what's the big goal, is the big goal is exceeding expectations on the DPI report card. So that, yes, for one year, we want to improve, but that's our goal to get to within that five-year plan. And so it works similarly for all of them. Um, I've talked a lot about the strategic plan, all of them kind of roll, roll into an annual scorecard piece at the district level. When we get to the building level, for example, in sample, some of the facility pieces don't necessarily, or the fiscal pieces don't always go to the building level. But all of the student engagement, staff engagement, social emotional learning does. So I guess I'll just ask any questions on that. So far, this is the same as what I shared.
Would there be a way to summarize each month what task slash goal we're accomplishing? I mean, so this is really nice, but it's a lot taken in class, right? I, I know you already got it broken down to kind of a per month. Like, would it be something we could kind of assemble each month and say, this is, this is what we're doing this month, right? I mean, I know it's good to have that long-term goal too, but.
I mean, what we could do is, what we sometimes do internally is what we call verify. So we look at our actions, because their action steps are often kind of, you do it, you did it or you didn't. And just say, here's the strategic actions that we've been focusing on. I mean, and maybe as I think about it, I'll think of a better example. Just quickly, that's a way that I think. Because some of the pieces, we don't have results every month to report on.
Right, right.
Um, overall, there's something that happens pretty much every month, but not in every category. But there could be, and maybe it's just an update on the strategic actions completed.
Right, so I feel like every meeting, I should be coming in and grabbing that entire document, looking through the, every single piece and like, okay. Like, is there something new this month? Like, did we, like, did we miss something?
Right.
Or is something due next month that we have to do this month, or we won't have it done next month? I just want to make sure we're, you know, keeping our eye on the ball, so to speak.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I struggle with, that document's good, but for me, as a progress standpoint, like I struggle with it because this is like information overload.
Yes, and maybe it is, just, and maybe it's even a monthly report out of highlights. So for example, eighth grade is, um, doing some tour stuff tomorrow, like just, that's all connected to the academic and career planning. So maybe it's some, there'll be kind of narrow pieces, but at least it would give the board a chance to see that there's, in all categories, there's things that happen every month. Because I understand, you know, otherwise it kind of leaves the impression, like, we'll talk about this in October, but then we're not working on it till February, which isn't necessarily true.
Right, right.
Any other thoughts on that or things that could be?
I don't, I'm hesitant to add another column, but maybe in a, another area where you could write, you know, work that's been done to achieve those goals. I, I guess that would be the same kind of thing, like a report on, you know, goal number one, you know, it's quarter one, we're doing this trip to CBTCE. So that satisfies something in that category.
And maybe it is just a summary that we don't have to do it like the, you know, we, it could be the whole kind of like a standing thing where at the end of the year, we'd be like, what was done this month in accordance to make those goals happen?
It would be nice visually to see, oh, so far this year, we've addressed goals one, three, and four, but we haven't heard anything about goal two.
Yep.
Is that, you know, what's the work ethic done there? So it would be kind of nice to know that, but I guess that's kind of more for the administration to know, I mean, that's fair. For you to act on.
So I think we could, we can work on some kind of a format for that.
I know we'll approve this later, but is this more of our five-year strategic plan or are these our actual goals?
These, this, these are the annual goals, so everything on the left, so the strategic plan, you already approved that, what's kind of that big sheet. And so like those goals are on the right, but when, when you approve this, this will be all of the annual goals, which are kind of on the left. And then the actions are just this year. Yes.
We still need, we still need to set a DPI, right? So are we gonna be able to approve that without having numbers for the DPI?
I guess, I mean, I put the goal as improve the Wisconsin State Report Card rating from the twenty-twenty-one results. So if in five years, we have to get to exceed expectations, I mean, we don't have our baseline.
Right.
We have our two-year-old baseline. So, you know, kind of the idea is around that continuous improvement, that we would continually improve that result to get to the exceed expectations.
Okay, so like last year, we had a goal that we were gonna increase by a certain percentage. That's not necessarily a goal we're looking to hit yet. We just want to exceed in five years?
Yes, but we want to increase each time from the year before. I mean, the report card always, we kind of go around just because it's information that's always released mid-November.
Yeah, so I guess we have another one on. Is there an attendance one or something like that too?
Yes. Um, at or above ninety percent.
I don't remember, and is that something we're sharing out now? Or when's that, when's that goal due at the very end of the year as an average or average kind of share?
Yeah, so like all of these, then at the end of the year, we'll go back and kind of do that red, yellow, green. And even mid-year, we'll say like red, yellow, green, like, yeah, we're on track, who we're worried or, wow, we're not even, we're going the wrong way. So we'll, usually mid-year, we do that report out, and then end of year, it'll be like, we met our goal, we didn't meet our goal, but we improved. Or we didn't meet our goal at all, or we, we, you know, did worse.
Okay, so the X factor on attendance rate would not be related to COVID happenstance is correct?
I mean, we sort of just left it.
I hope not.
Right, I mean, they are, right now, what I'll report out in attendance includes COVID. We don't take those kids out. Just because the idea is having kids in school is what's gonna help our achievement.
Right.
And so that, to me, that's an example of, we may not meet our goal, but that doesn't mean it's not what we should be working towards. And, you know, I, sometimes I don't, I don't, I hesitate to say like, there might be a good reason you don't meet a goal, because I don't know that that's true. But there might be a reason you don't meet a goal, that you just try to adjust, and still, you still want to strive though, because that's the result you want.
Still want to have a goal, for sure.
Yeah.
So, I, this, this is just being picky, but I know there's lots of them. What I'm struggling with a little bit is the goal on if they're like measurable and when they're due. So I get that we're gonna look at it at the end of the year at ninety-one percent. Is that gonna be an average of a whole year, a month-over-month average?
It would be, I mean, the attendance rate typically would be like that at the end of the year, what was our attendance rate?
The whole year, we're just gonna average all together?
You know, because you, but we also, you'll see, we share it out month by month. That's how we get it.
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm struggling with, is I see the most.
Because we don't want it, we don't want to average so much that it dilutes any impact.
Yeah, okay, just so we're all on the same page, because that's where, I feel like some of these goals, we all look at them differently.
Yes.
And then so that, if I'm thinking it's month by month versus the whole year on the average.
And it, and you'll see kind of in those boxes, that doesn't mean we don't have kind of checkpoints where we say, where are we at with some of them? Other questions?
If a child's on quarantine and they're doing online school, virtual school.
They still count as absent right now.
Oh, they count as absent? Because they're not in the building?
Because they're not. And part of it is because for us to coordinate, like who logs in, do they have access, do they not have internet access? Some get packets that they work on and come back. For us, for DPI reporting, and that's kind of what we pull for this, that is what we look at. So it's, I shouldn't maybe have said it, so for them as an individual, like, does that count? Like, they might be true, and that won't happen, but when we look at our numbers, we want kids in school.
I guess, going back to our original topic, where we were talking about reporting back on this information, the fact that you have months and years and all this, I think that's probably pretty good at, you know, the accountability piece of when you expect to give that report.
Mm-hmm.
That maybe that's plenty.
Well, and that's, that's probably why this is a little bit more cumbersome than other years, is we before only just had honestly the first two columns.
Yeah.
And I had a separate calendar that I'd say when I would report it, but we didn't have it all in one document. And so the advantage is everything's in one document, and the disadvantage is everything's in one document.
But it gives the, you know, if we want to know when we're gonna hear about whatever it is, we can look at that and say, okay, by March, you'll get a report.
Yes.
So I think that extra detail satisfies that question for me.
Any other questions or comments? I'll just, the communication plan, we've talked about that at the committee meeting, just a reminder, um, about the social media communication guidelines. And then I also reshared the kind of Donovan communication plan. This just sort of highlights some pieces out of that that we would look at.
One question I had, I pressured Nora last week too, not, not that I have to change this, is I know some of those dates are kind of a little far out in the future. Is there a way to get through some of those sooner? Like, I know some of them's like, seems like, just like, you know, getting on Google Form, I'll like, you know, suffice for some of those steps. I'm a big fan of simpler's easier.
I mean, possibly, I will say, because there's usually often a single or two people. So that doesn't mean it might not happen before then, but, you know, I guess the board can weigh in on that. But some of that, even like Kanat District alumni is one, like, we want to have a structure so that we're not just focusing in a goofy way, you know. First, how do we engage alumni overall? Is there a piece to that? Because there are some, um, application isn't quite the right word, but ways to do that. So I guess, you know, that just was part of thinking with the plan, all the things we wanted, how to prioritize some of that. It doesn't necessarily mean those aren't important. It was just, you know, um, yeah, some of that, we just, manpower-wise sometimes is a little bit of an issue.
Who does most of that work typically fall on in our district?
I would say I'm responsible for a lot of it, not when it comes to, um, the, if it's, if it's implementing underneath the technology umbrella, then it would be kind of under Nick or Joe, that, then they kind of work with that. But I'll use the alumni piece, like, I would be the one that would come up with the process and a form and a way to reach out. How do I identify people so that we're not missing people in that? Any other questions on that? Um, Fastbridge Fall Screening, so this is one of our report outs. Um, this is also kind of an experiment, we've talked about trying to have as much as possible, um, graphs and things that are easier to understand. So we're working on that. So what this top one is, this is reading, Fastbridge is a reading screener that students in third through eleventh grade take fall, mid-winter, and spring. So that's one of our checks. And so what this is, is just comparing, this is fall, yellow is this fall, blue is last fall. So this is third graders, fourth graders, fifth graders, et cetera. If you look at the second graph, and I will say this isn't perfect, but cohort trends means, so as you see, third graders were second graders last year, so they don't have a bar. This yellow one is fourth graders this fall, the blue one is the fourth graders when they were third graders last fall. So I'll do it again, like, fifth graders, the yellow is what they just did, the blue is what did those fifth graders do when they were fourth graders? Now, it's not exact, because like we had kids move in or move out, I mean, I didn't, I didn't separate anybody, I just took the fourth grade and third grade. Um, the piece to remember is a couple of things. One is the benchmark changes as you go into the grades. And the other piece that I'll show you or remind you of is, we have, the cutoff is comparative to the state test score. Because what we want to use these for is to predict how will students perform on the state test. That's our kind of, that's part of our purpose. The other is teachers can structurally can look at what do kids need more practice on. But the other part is we want to, we want to avoid surprises like, wow, we thought we were really on track and we, we find that we were not. Kids had a lot of concepts they didn't know. The way we do that is we look at the state test, what's the expectation to be proficient? And we align it with the percentile score there. So before I go to math, I'm just gonna show you. What the differences are in that. So, for example, this is, the forward exam is the state test. To be proficient, if you think of the old style bell curve, fiftieth percentile proficient, not necessarily. So for example, third grade, you have to be at the sixty-first percentile or you are not proficient. You have to be at the ninety-fourth percentile to be advanced. That's just the statistics around that test. So if we take those third graders, these third graders had to be at the sixty-first percentile or higher to be in my yellow bar. I'm gonna show it again, because it's kind of. This proficient is the percentile score kids need to be proficient on whatever that state test is. And you'll see it's different every grade, it's different reading math, there, you know, yeah, like I said, you would think it could be simpler, but it's not. That's just the reality of the scores those kids need to be proficient. So we take that, so kind of similarly, ninth and tenth grade, you have to be at the sixty-first or sixty-seventh percentile. So if you look at ninth and tenth grade, because you'll see that's, um, some things there. This is the, those kids had to be at the sixty-first. And so sometimes that's a little bit, some of these dips are changes in students, but some are. And the one thing I will say that was, we found in the fall, kids scored pretty high. They were happy to be in school, they were excited, they were kind of motivated. They, kids were also this fall, but not quite to the same degree. But I just wanted to kind of tell you, that's a comparison. So even though we do cohorts, it's a little bit messy because the state test. So, even though we do cohorts, it's a little bit messy because the state test cutoffs are different for different grades and different content. And then I'll show you the math. This is the same thing, so these are just third grade last year, third grade this year, fourth, different kids. Fourth grade last year, fourth grade this year, different kids. And then if you look at the cohort, it's similar, or mostly the same kids. How did they do as like fourth graders, how did they do as third graders? And how did they do as fourth graders? So, as an example, when you look at fourth and fifth, we're like, wow, we dropped. That doesn't mean necessarily, cause remember the fourth grade benchmark is higher. So, it's not like, wow, they know less, but there are less that are already proficient. So, I'll just say that again, it doesn't mean they, they know less, they didn't like lose knowledge, but less of them know what they should know as a fourth grader.
Compared to what they do.
Compared to what they should've known as a third grader.
But to be clear, regardless of where that proficient sits, like a sixty-one, a fifty, or whatever, proficient is proficient, right?
Yeah. Yes.
If you're proficient in fourth grade or efficient in third grade, that still is proficient.
Correct.
Understand that the, the, the.
Material.
Potential number moves, right?
Yes. And the material is more difficult.
Right, but it's still proficient.
But it's still proficient, yes.
So, we should still expect to see somewhat on par, right?
Yes.
We shouldn't expect to see massive deviations.
Yes, and the other piece that I will say, so this we look at district-wide, for classroom teachers, what we encourage them to focus on is kind of where are students struggling? What are they, what do we already, what do we already know that we don't have to spend a lot of time on? And what are things that we need to intervene with? So, those are the kinds of things that are conversations that are happening right now. And for them, kind of Ally talked about, they connect it back to the other piece that classroom teachers are looking at with all their summative assessments is what percent of students are getting eighty percent or better the first time around? Cause we talk about retakes, and that's sort of a different conversation, but it's most efficient with the first time around, who knows eighty percent of this content? Cause those kids, there is also some alignment, maybe that's a little bit too strong a word, between kids earning eighty percent on those summatives and kids who are proficient.
And this is the, is this the second year we've been doing FastBridge?
Correct.
So, it's hard to, so we can't really see much more of a trend than.
No, it's a little bit tricky. The other piece is sometime again in November, the, the hard part with state assessment data is the turnaround is so long that kids take a test in April that they see individually in July and we see in November. Cause what we wanna look at is last year, FastBridge predicted, I'll just say sixty-one percent of our kids are proficient in fourth grade. How many really were, and how aligned was that? So, that's something we're also gonna wanna look at because
Compared, yes.
We, we wanna put the correct level of confidence in this, whatever that is.
Hi Jenny.
Mm-hmm.
I just have one comment.
Yeah.
We also have now in my, this will be our second year doing it, we've shifted how we give the assessment and how we talk about the assessment. So, we're, now that we'll get into January, we need to do it again, we actually have a thirty-minute block before we take the assessment to talk about it and to show kids what they had last time, haven't done that before. So, we're hoping that those kids who kind of fly right through it and don't put the effort in will hopefully tie it to some kind of, I wanna beat my score from last fall to get better. So, we're hoping that that also helps validate the test a little bit, cause we don't fully know how many kids just breeze through it in the thirty minutes they took.
Right, cause we, we could individually, we would always see one or two examples of students where we know it wasn't a fair representation of what they knew. But after the fact, there isn't a lot that we can do with that, so they're trying to kind of be more proactive.
So, we just like pick on like, you know, the tenth graders a little bit here, right?
Yep, yep.
And if we look at the cohort trend there, I mean, that's a pretty significant drop.
Mm-hmm.
Do we know, do we have suspicion what happened there? Do we, is it?
I think that's something, especially on in-service day, that teachers are kind of digging into and, and in their PLCs.
Obviously, that type of drop there that we're all seeing and looking at, that kind of raises a red flag to go dig a little bit to see what happened there, right? I mean, that's kind of why we do all this crazy stuff.
Yep, that's, exactly, that's the point.
Will we get information back on that, like at a future meeting? I, I'd be very curious to see if there's like some substantial reason for that, or if it was just like, yeah, we did poorly, we gotta improve. Like I, I'm just very, you know, obviously for my own curiosity or anything, I'd like to see that.
Sure.
I mean, we did see a few where we got better, but just a few, right? So, and again, it's, it's, you know, was it summer slide, was it COVID summer slide, was it, I don't know, right? Like it was such a weird year to try to compare, I get that. And so I'm not looking to come down on you at all, like I'm really looking to understand like what it was, so we could really try to turn that around.
I think I've asked this before, looking at those proficient standards that you showed the other, is that, is that something that changes year to year based on?
No, so right now, this does stay the same. I mean, unless they ever would change state tests.
And that's determined, and who sets those numbers?
Um, they're set by the state. So, we just looked at, you know, what did they have as their cutoff, and then that's what we put in.
Do you know if that means, so say that third grade proficient is sixty-one?
Mm-hmm.
Does that mean typically that fifty percent of the kids score higher than sixty-one percent and fifty percent of the kids?
No.
Not necessarily.
I mean, so statistically, that means actually sixty-one to a hundred of the kids are proficient.
Oh, it is an actual.
And sixteen and below are not.
Okay, I don't know if that's a proper number like that.
Yes.
So, why?
I mean, out of a hundred, and that's, that's why.
Do you have an explanation of why, where they pick these numbers?
Not really, I mean, they, they kind of had people that looked at the test content and said, like, third graders should know to this point.
Yeah.
And then what happened was, I don't know that they, they considered this necessarily at the time. I mean, the other piece I'll say is it has to do with, um, just the politics around state testing and feeling like it wasn't rigorous enough. So, if you think of the old bell curve, like fifty percent is average and generally, actually thirty-five to eighty is, is sort of okay. Like you're not necessarily at risk. So, I mean, the other piece is we will have kids who are like at a fifty-ninth percentile who are doing, who appear to do fine in school, like they're passing classes, they're getting good decent grades because they're kind of an average kid. But we still have to boost them up on those state tests. And I mean, they're really, it's, it's hard and a lot of them to get to the advanced level.
And I understand that while picking the proficient number may be subjective, I think the idea is that every year they look at that test and they figure out what is the proficient number, right? Cause they go through question by question.
They, they do, other than they don't do it every year, like, cause the test doesn't change.
If the test doesn't change, right?
Yeah.
When the test does change, cause it has to, right?
Then they do. Yep, and then we would look at this and adopt it, we might have to adjust.
But the idea is, and this is I think the important part, is that proficient is proficient. I mean, that even if the data changes.
Right.
Even if they change where that mark is, this cohort trending, you know, over ten years should still be a very solid number for us to look at because proficient is based on a very, we'll call it scientific way of coming up with that number.
Right.
Random, and it's not like if there's a hundred questions, it's always gonna be fifty questions, right, is proficient.
Right.
It's what knowledge do they have to have to be proficient?
And it, and it's, that's why I said this simplifies it a little bit, cause it's a little bit more concept-based, but it, that is, that's kind of where they fell out, so. These graphs are showing proficient and above, or just? Correct.
Do we have, so, not that I wanna focus on the good or the bad, I'd also be interested to see the trending for, you know, what are below, like our, our bottom.
Like the four categories?
And, and be nice to see the four categories at some point and see, you know, how many do we have advanced? And how many do they have like clearly struggling, right?
Yes.
Um, and trend that, right, and see where that's trending too. Because, you know, it, you know, let's, you know, look at tenth grade, and maybe, yeah, this is, might look bad, but maybe we'll find out that trending, like we doubled our advanced and, and, you know, took out half of what was our really, really bad, put into the, you know, second category, right? Like, so overall, you might've actually come up as a whole, but just this one category looks like it's a redhead, right? And so kind of when you pull that out, I can see where you might not get the full picture. I'm, I'm making that up, right?
Right.
But I can see where you could actually just go, wow, this is bad, but if you look at the whole trend of all four categories, it might actually, oh, this actually, we did do better as a group.
And I think, I mean, one of the things that that does kind of recognize, and I can say we don't have a lot of advanced kids, that's one area that we need to work on. But also, if we have kids who move from below basic to basic, you don't necessarily get credit for them, cause they're still not proficient, even if they made quite a bit of gain.
But we're making progress.
Yes, that's what I mean.
And that's important to see, right?
Which is kind of a point.
I would love to see like in tenth grade, like did we make progress, or did we go the other way in those two categories as well, right?
Right.
If we went the other way in all categories in that grade, then it's like, okay, we got a problem.
Is that what we were doing in the past?
Yeah.
The number that we had?
Well, I did, when I, with the state testing, but I didn't always do it with FastBridge, I just did proficient and not.
And are, so are these the two graphs that we're gonna see all the time? Are these the graphs that help you guys? I, I guess ultimately it's for.
I mean, so, and I can do, like, I can do it both ways, that's not really hard, you know, to do this plus the four categories, just on a separate one.
Right. Right, and I almost like to see a, a per grade on, when you do the four categories, right? So, show the trend, you know, on a per grade, right? So, you can look at fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, cause there's gonna be a lot of columns there, right? So, you can't absorb that across all the grades for four columns.
Cause that's part of it is we tried, like, so, last year, sometimes there was so many things piled in that it was hard to just.
Yeah, too many colors.
To figure out which was which.
But then at least.
Do you want that to us rather than having to wait till the next meeting? If you get it done?
Um, possibly.
That is something that obviously the staff would look at all of that data, not just these two data points.
And they look honestly more con, connected to the kids in their classrooms that they're working with. And not that they're not concerned about the others, but that's where the focus is.
And they could pick out one student A and look at their results from the last however many two years that they've done it, right?
Yes.
How they did not, when they weren't in their class.
Yes, and that's something, um, and again, just to kind of connect it back to this, to the annual scorecard that we have is I have to open it again, is having, Ediclima is kind of a database that staffers are starting to use more and more and helping them to understand how to become more efficient with that.
And then how many FastBridges are we gonna do a year again?
Three.
Three a year?
And it's, the timing is set by their norm, so it's always kind of September, January after Christmas, and then end of year.
Right after holiday break.
Yes, and, and honestly, end of year, we typically have done it after the state test, just because we feel like we don't wanna do it before, and then by the time the state test comes, we're like, you know. At least we'll experiment with that a little bit too. Attendance report, so this is kind of connected to what we had talked about as well earlier. And sometimes the numbers are easier just cause the graph isn't always super sensitive. But you'll see, um, and it's been a little bit tricky, I mean, you'll, like if you look at December twenty twenty, that's when we were actually virtual for a while because we, we had a lot of issues, but we kind of have bounced back. So, every month we add this in, and this is where we would look at overall, how do we improve that attendance rate? And that, what it does is look at, it's not around individual kids' intruency, it's like what percent of our kids are attending, are in class every day.
That's everybody, that's everyone.
Yes, that, everybody's grouped in there. And it doesn't really, you know, if, if you're out, cause you had, if it's excused, not excused, doesn't, doesn't really matter. Cause we just want to as much as possible have kids here.
Would you, would you say that right around that, I mean, looking at that, right around that ninety to ninety-two percent is pretty typical?
I would, you know, so part of what we're trying to work on is how can we, when we think about our, our student achievement, we've got more room to grow, so there, we kind of wanna be more aggressive. Here, we're at, like, we're pretty good, but how do we keep things better? And sometimes that's harder to eke out those extra percentage points, but we still wanna try to do that because that's gonna in turn impact our student achievement.
Did you have a sense of what the pre-COVID numbers look like for like twenty nineteen? Like, were they pretty, I, I mean, it's just, we're looking at a COVID year, right?
Right, I would say.
I don't know if COVID means that is the baseline for this area.
Not terribly different, I mean, still eighty-nine to ninety-one.
So, somewhere in there pretty commonly.
Yeah. Um, the other piece is behavior report, which will also connect, and this actually, we, I just kept tracking it. So, at some point, if it gets too long, I'll drop off some of the older ones. So, if you, the blue is out of OSS, is in-school suspension, um, the red or orange is in-school suspension. And one of the things, so you'll see, we did have, we had a drop in both. Um, for the first time, we had kind of more out of school than in-school, some of that. What, this is one, again, that's kind of tricky because we've made a lot of improvement over time. So, once you get to that point, one or two students sometimes can have a bigger impact on your data versus when you have, you know, sixty to eighty. So, that's something we're continuing to monitor, but again, it goes kind of back to, sometimes it's a, it's a consequence that we have to use, but as much as possible, we want kids in class.
Yeah, those numbers are definitely trending the right way.
And I would say, I mean, that's the credit to the building, say, both done a lot of work on kind of restorative practices, kind of gaining efficiency even within their referral systems, and it's starting to really kind of pay off. All right. Can I say we get rid of the whole cellphone year? When that.
Yeah, cut, cut the graph right at September fifteenth, yeah.
I gotta keep that forever, cause it looks better.
Yeah, makes everything else look good, right?
It'll always start at February.
Yeah, thank you.
Better than eighteen.
Yeah, favorite nineteen is the baseline there.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, we need to talk about our WASB candidate, Region Four Director, Hope.
And in, for board members, in your papers, I think it's second to the bottom, is, if you didn't have a chance to look, there's a, something that, there's two candidates. Aileen Sikora and Alan Tuckton-Hogan. So, what'll happen is, once we get into new business, the, this board will vote for a director, and then Cedric will take that vote and enter it for Region Four, which is kind of our WASB region. So, um, I don't know if there's discussion or people have questions or anything at this time, otherwise, I just wanted to make sure you had a chance to peek at that before it became an action item.
Does anybody here have, I mean, I, I did a little bit of research today, I don't know them personally, right? So, it's kind of hard for me to, it's kind of like when you're picking the state superintendent, right? Read a bunch of websites and hopefully believe some of it.
Aileen's been on the Policy and Resolutions Committee, so she's familiar with what's going on at the upper levels, you know. I sort of done that too, and I, and it's a good experience, and, uh, I, you know, I feel that she probably would be a very good candidate for that board, you know? I mean, I mean.
I kind of like that she's right next to us in Cornell, she was gonna share a lot of the same concerns ourselves.
Right.
As a small school, yeah.
That's one of the, that's one of the things I kind of looked at.
I guess it'd be how far, speaking of that, how far west does Region Four go?
All the way to the state line.
All the way, all the way to the river.
I think what I looked at, yeah, it was a real list of.
Well, I mean, you're, you're, you're talking about, in that case, I think you're talking about way, a wide range of different types of school divisions.
Yes.
Correct.
I guess with that said, I guess.
The one who is retiring was from Mindori.
So, another small district, so it's kind of nice to keep that balance a little bit.
I guess since I'm like a delegate, I'd make a motion to, uh, collect Aileen Sikora for, uh.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do it at the next item, right?
Hang on, so.
Oh, that's right, okay.
No, they, they just.
This is a discussion right now.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, remove business.
Now.
Yeah.
Need to still take my motion. And by the way, pay attention, all of us, I think a lot of you's gonna do if you do it in this next year.
Okay, we need a motion for, uh, to recommend a candidate for, for Region Four.
I'll do that, motion for Aileen Sikora.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cedric, second by Corey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, pay Cedric.
Uh, next thing, is to approve our COVID nineteen tiered protocol plan. And get a.
I'll make that motion to approve the, uh, the COVID plan protocol as presented.
You get a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Becker, second by Donna, all in favor?
Can we get a discussion?
Discussion, any discussion?
Um, the only, I, I, you would lay out a lot of discussion at the last meeting, kind of about the difference between, you know, the safety measures versus the, we're just don't have enough attendance? And where's that falling, did that kind of surface in here, or was that?
It did, so I moved over, like, kind of the sanitize between classes, some of those things that we talked about moved into the level two. And then, I mean, part of it, sort of the disclaimer on the bottom is due to staff shortages, it is possible we might have to move to virtual instruction. And then, I mean, part of it, sort of the disclaimer on the bottom, is due to staff shortages, it is possible we might have to move to virtual instruction. But we wouldn't necessarily do that based on a student piece unless we actually hit that benchmark.
Right, because I think my big concern was the fact that we have a lot of parents that are already self-quarantined without identifying as COVID, and then with the quarantine procedure, you know, we could have more kids out, um, as well. So I just, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't get to a point where we had attendance low enough that the teachers didn't have enough bandwidth to actually, um, because I think we've already experienced that once this year. And, so I don't know what that magic number was that we hit, that the teacher started to struggle a little bit.
I think it's, you know, we would first look at, and that wouldn't necessarily be part of the plan, because it might depend on how the students are divided. We talked about like having sub-support that could come in and work with those students. Well, um, and I did share kind of in the Friday, you know, distant looking in the, at that, and my disclaimer is, some parents don't give a reason, they just say so-and-so's out today, and so those kids got lumped in. In general, so I didn't count every single student, most of those kids were out maybe two to three days, not like the one to two weeks, like, they might be if they were quarantined. So it, they don't necessarily always get as far behind, or if they, I mean, some called in, they were sick-sick. It's a little different, because they maybe wouldn't be doing work anyway. So I, I didn't, I didn't include that in here, because I wasn't sure how to account for that. I think we would through that sub-use, um, but I'd be hesitant to just use student sickness to go to like a two-thirty end time, just because, like, a lot of that is similar to what happened pre-COVID, and I don't know. I, I just, I think as much as possible, we want to try to stay with our regular parameters, I don't know.
So, I understand a lot, makes complete sense.
Yeah.
Is there a way for the teachers to identify that, hey, I've got a lot of kids out, struggling, I gotta get all this homework to all these kids? I don't want to pound it in, like, is there a way to identify that?
I would say, you know, typically, they would connect with their principals, I mean, that's what's happened in the past. What I could do is some specific communication around that, because.
Just to make sure they surface it sort of in the.
We want, we want to encourage that communication, but also, everybody has a different tolerance level for all of that,
Right.
so that there's sort of a communication channel for that. And I, every other Tuesday, have a meeting with the staff, so I could include it in there.
I mean, if there's just a cutoff, if they have, you know, more than five students quarantined no time, or more than ten, or I don't know what the magic number is.
Right. Right.
But that they would get an automatic email or communication with, from you or the principal, saying, how are you doing? Do you need extra help?
And we, that, we could also easily do, have some kind of standard.
In-service next Monday, right?
Yes.
I just want to try to avoid a re- what we experienced here a couple weeks ago, so.
Yep.
I could also just see a lot of our staff, because they work really hard, that they would be struggling, but wouldn't want to say anything,
Right.
because they know that everybody's struggling, and so they don't want to complain.
Yes.
Right, right.
Yes.
Maybe if they didn't know if there was help available.
Right, but here's some options that we could look at.
Right.
Well, and again, really, it's, you know, the, not only are they struggling, but then the kids are gonna struggle as well, right? Because it's a double whammy, so to make sure they understand, listen, this isn't you holding your hand up saying you're failing, this is holding your hand up saying, listen, you know, it's not my fault all the kids are gone, right?
Right.
The man needs some help, um, and they should be aware that we're here to help, so.
No, I think that makes perfect sense.
Okay, we all agree?
Violet, my question is, the Chippecoli Quarantine Guideline, is that the exact guideline we're following at this time, so it's attached to this?
Yes. All right, so, so right now, we are following the kind of seven, ten day, sorry, can't top it quick at the same time. Um, so if they have a negative test, they can come back. Um, and I can say, I won't say never, it's rare that people end up with a fourteen-day quarantine. Uh, most of them are doing seven or ten days. Uh, other than, sometimes where that happens is if it's like a parent that's positive, because they can't separate in the home, so they have to wait till everybody's getting better, like with littler kids, sometimes that gets to be a little bit longer. So if they get a negative test forty-eight hours before that seven day, they can come back at seven days. Um, or if they don't test, and we have some that don't, but they're symptom-free, um, they can come back at the ten days. So those two are the most common.
Is this side note, I know in the dashboard, we have a link to the county, but it says scroll down to get this, could we change that link to this link? Because I saw this link later on, and I'm like, oh, this is a way later link than.
Yeah. I had to think for a minute how to do that, but yes.
Yeah, it's just in the document.
I just have to do it as a, scan it for a Google doc.
Yeah, sure. Sorry, I couldn't make it up.
Uh, I don't think so, so regardless of whoever it is, is.
That's what we follow.
Planted it to quarantine for seven days.
Uh, yes. I mean, I mean, I'll just clarify, like, we don't quarantine, public health quarantines, but that's what we follow.
We just let public health know.
Yes.
And, and just so I understand too, and, and I think, like I said a friend that went through this, it's, they identify you as being close contact for fifteen minutes, you know, like, you have to be so close, like, under what, three feet or six feet for fifteen minutes?
Six feet for fifteen minutes or more.
And that's when they'll consider you to have.
And then you're considered a close contact.
But no, I don't, this doesn't have anything about, um, are we still, like, I know the WIA for sports, and do we follow that? If there's, um, kids that have been vaccinated, they're considered in close contact, they can come back right away, right?
Yes. So, and that's true, and that is in, like, the bigger piece that's on the dashboard, so maybe I'll just add this as an extra. So if people, if someone's vaccinated and doesn't have symptoms, then they're not required to quarantine. That's true, and it's not.
And you're gonna link this then from the, from the dashboard then as well?
Yes.
So then everybody can add it.
Yep, and then I would, I actually will link the plan in there once it's approved, so people can see it.
So if you're vaccinated.
Without symptoms.
Just for sports?
No, or for school, so, correct.
So is that just the WIA?
No, it's, it's either or.
So does the county have that?
Yes.
They're saying that?
Well, it's not on this one, it's on their website. What happens is, when I talk about scroll to the bottom, they have kind of some narrative descriptor, and then this is sort of their one page. Um, that's listed in the narrative. Because there's also pieces around if, if you're three feet or more, but both people have masks on, you don't necessarily have to quarantine, and so, like, Jessica follows those policies. It's just not all on that clean one pager, it is all on that website that's linked on the dashboard. And I would say that's not been as common, just because pretty frequently, both people aren't wearing masks.
So do we want to attach that guideline, or a link to?
I can put a link to that on this, but then this will also get linked to the dashboard. So, no matter where you click, you should find it.
Um, that's all I think I got, although mask use, like, I think we have optional versus going to be recommended. Actually, except for, it's always been in the past, so do we leave it? I thought it was recommended.
Um, that was the suggestion at one point, but then it seemed like somebody said.
Okay.
Optional, I'm, I'm fine saying recommended.
Recommended unless mandated by another agency, because we have federal, um.
That's just an example.
Agency meaning like, like, agency meaning like our Chippecoli Board or our state.
Correct. You know, that way, if there is something that changes in the future, we don't have to change our whole plan.
Yep.
Are people, what do people think about changing that? From optional to recommended? Anyone?
I would encourage it.
Yeah, I prefer recommended.
I'm just making sure Brad's feeling okay. You want to change it to recommended.
Correctly, it's fine.
Okay.
I feel like we've heard it backwards.
I mean, I don't know if we have to spell it unless mandated by, like, let's just say state agency here.
Because it could be any, federal, county, you know, I don't know.
Copy agency, yeah.
That's why I included that example, just so that people kind of saw. Okay.
All right, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, uh, a motion to approve the updated library plan.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Becca, second by Donna. Discussion.
So I hadn't made any changes.
I said everything I had to say.
Terms of the committee meeting.
One thing I'd like to say, I guess, if, um, you know, for people that have, if you struggle with a book, go start the process, you know, um, that's what it's there for. It's not, it's not a perfect situation, I guess, um, because like Corey said, you can't possibly read them all from cover to cover, you can't. So I think Nick is obviously doing the best he can with all the time he has, and we have, being that we're a public school, we definitely have, uh, we have, um, we have to be, have, what's the word I'm looking for?
Diversity.
Diversity, diversity, yeah.
And I, I would like to clarify, too, that, um, in case anybody misunderstood, in no way, shape, or form was I insinuating or even attempting to state that Mr. Kotek wasn't doing his job. He was clearly within what he, you know, what he was given as far as rules, he was definitely following those policies, and by no way, shape, or form was this something that, um, I was stating that he wasn't doing his job. I think the concerns that were brought to me, and again, these weren't my concerns specifically, these were concerns that were brought to me, um, about the selection process, and that's why I brought it up, so, um, just want to be very clear, I have nothing but the utmost respect for Mr. Kotek, he does a fantastic job, and we're very lucky to have him.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, need a motion to approve the annual scorecard.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Cedric, second by Becca. Uh, any discussion on that one?
Um, you know, I just don't know if I have that warm, fussy feeling that we're on the same page with all the same goals and the same exact timeline. I just feel like that's been one of the things that as a board, we struggle with a little bit. But if everybody else is comfortable with it, I guess I'm comfortable, I'm the only one that, I just.
So think about these goals now, and the, and the scorecard business here, is, you know, these, these could be massaged and changed, you know, and worked on, I mean, I, this, I mean, this is kind of new to us, you know, getting, getting started on this. And make these changes, you know, as we go along, I mean, every year, we have a chance to do that.
Right, I just want to make sure that everybody understands and knows, like, we're all, like, these are year-over-year goals, or this is like semester, I don't know, not semester goals, but, um, what are, I guess, what are some of the ones?
Well, until some, like, I don't know, are reported out three times a year. Like, this one is just twice, because it's, it's gonna take a little bit of time. So this is around the, at least one learning opportunity for community members. Um, so part of it is, what are people interested in learning about, and then by the end of the year, hopefully, they came and learned about it, and we did some things. So that one's not gonna have as frequent of checkpoints as, I don't know, I can't think of.
Attendance.
Yes, attendance, which is something we do, you know, or like facility improvements, we'll kind of share out, we'll have the RFP proposals and some of those things that'll come. So I, I realize maybe one of the struggles is, like, it's not equal for each one, but depending on what the goal is, some of them, like, it doesn't, until we have the RFP proposals, there isn't, I don't know what to say other than we're waiting for the RFP proposals, you know? For some of them, it, it depends a little bit on the timeline of the actual action that's happening.
I, I guess, here, the enrollment one.
Yep.
So we're year one, and this is where I struggle, right?
Yep.
We want to go from seven fifty-four to seven eighty, but we're not gonna be able to do that all in, like, one year, or that's, how, how are we gonna accomplish that, and then, like, what's the timeframe? I just, and all of a sudden, next year, we're gonna be sitting here, and it's gonna be.
Well, I'll, I mean, to me, that's an example, that's a very aggressive goal, but if we think that we have to get to eight fifty, we've gotta, we gotta find a way, and remember, that's also a goal, though we, enrollment only counts in September and January.
Correct.
All the movement in between doesn't really mean anything when it comes to the state, which is why we're kind of doing it. So, I mean, that's one that, do I get nervous about it? Yes, because that means from now to January, there's a lot that has to be done, but if our goal is eight fifty, and if you remember, we had a lot of discussion around that, being pretty aggressive. You know, we, we tried to kind of per- portion that out.
Yep. Yep.
All right, um, all in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, down to E, um, need a motion to approve the social media communication plan.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Donna?
I'll second.
Second by Cedric. Any discussion on that one?
So, Facebook polls.
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Last one, or not, last one, um, need a motion to approve fishing club.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Donna?
I'll second.
Second by Becca? Uh, any discussion on that one?
My only, I don't know, um, what kind of parameters there are with that Wisconsin, um, like, website or, uh, WIFA, but if, are there guidelines, I guess I should have looked into it more before asking this, about just safety-wise, with kids being on ice and vehicles being on ice, and is, you know?
I mean, they have some, and I would say that's something that we could also borrow from schools that are involved.
Sure.
Once we know that, just because, um, I realize some people have different levels of tolerance and aggression when it comes to ice fishing.
Right, yes. And that would never have.
We would be on the conservative part of that.
So that was just something that popped in my head after that last meeting, like, what are the rules on that? Because I think people that are hard price fishing people have different, which is sad. Yeah, so I don't know, I'm guessing there is some kind of parameters, but it would be, it'd be good to have that in the.
We can develop.
Make sure that's connected.
Yeah.
waiver, whatever, I think we need to do legally to be safe with that.
I'd be curious, knowing if Tori knows more about what they.
Right, I'm sure.
And I'm assuming they don't, they won't start the contests until a little later, I'm sure you wouldn't think.
It's been kind of connected. Yeah, but then there's a big thong, and they'll just, yeah, it's just something that I hadn't, I'm not familiar with it, so I thought it'd be good to look into.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Go on the link, so they'll make spring in it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, need a motion to approve, um, the increase in support staff pay.
Substitute rate?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to increase the support staff substitute rate to fifteen fifty an hour.
A second.
Motion by Cedric, second by Chrissy. Any discussion on that one?
So, I know this is part of a response to an inquiry that we had as a board. Um, I spoke to the individual that, um, sent that inquiry, and, um, and I was just a little confused about a few things, and I know they're kind of related to this. So, when I hear about sub, I guess I'm a little ignorant, I always thought it kind of like teacher sub, right? So, but we have subs for janitors, we have subs for office workers, and this is specific to that sub, right?
Yes.
Right.
Correct, an hourly sub, and if you remember, like, we did, maybe not on purpose, but like, we increased teacher sub rates, we increased our regular staff rates, this was one that we didn't do at the time, just as an oversight, but I'll take responsibility for that. Um, so it's just to kind of rectify that for anybody in that hourly situation.
So when people take on these roles, are they, do they sign paperwork to say that they're gonna work at these rates?
For subs, not necessarily, I mean, there's typically a conversation around that, but because they're not technically, technically our regular employee, I mean, there are parameters, there's background checks and all those things that happen, um, but they don't, they don't have a contract, I guess, I would say that, or even, even like a, a paraprofessional would still get, I don't know, it's not a contract, there's a different term that we use, like a le- a employee agreement or something that says, like, here's your rate, here's how many years you are, here's your benefits, all of that.
Right, right. I think, I think some of the, I think it's frustration from the situation might have been resolved if it was just simply a document that stated, you know, you're agreeing to work as a sub for this rate for, you know, up to this money an hour or something, very, very simple, right? Um, again, still be the annual employment, all that kind of good stuff around there, but I just think it would really clarify, because my first question to this individual is, well, what does your contract say? And they're like, no contract. And they're like, no contract.
Yeah.
Uh, and I'm like, well, how are you working, right?
Yeah.
This kind of seemed like the one-on-one piece that was missing a little bit, so maybe some administrative stuff should be included there.
So that's a piece that we can look at as well.
Yeah, so, that was my only real concern with the situation.
How many of these subs do we have per day or per year?
I mean, not enough. I mean, right now, a lot of times we run short, but, I mean.
Almost every time we run short with parents.
I guess my question is, like, this increase, is that gonna cost us an extra ten thousand or a hundred thousand dollars a year?
It depends, if it, I mean, some of it will offset if it can bring in more people, so it is, as an example, when we increased our teacher sub rate to one sixty, we're the highest in the area. I don't know that, at least initially, we didn't get any new teacher subs, we had the same people that we had, that we, you know, so if it doesn't really bring any new people in, it's not necessarily gonna be the same issue, but the other piece is, many of these subs work in special education, like, we have to try to rectify this and have better sub coverage if we can.
We hope it maybe.
Yes, I mean, that's the goal.
Which is gonna increase costs.
Um, but, I mean, that's something, as we talk about the budget, for example, because we knew we were working on this, that's planned into that, in our district budget.
If we would have had subs come in on the days that we had staff out, that amount of money that we didn't spend now can go towards this little extra piece that we're, hopefully, we'll get these positions filled when people are gone.
Think you had this, but is this an average of what other districts are doing?
It's, yeah, it's pretty close, I mean, we didn't do the analysis to the same depth that we did for regular positions, but it's, it's kind of been, I would say it's in the ballpark. We just kind of talked to, um, Cornell, I think is at six, fifteen or sixteen, um, but it's, it's pretty much the going rate, I would say. And part of it is, for hourly positions, we look at other jobs they can do, because typically those are local people that fill those positions.
So to Terry's point, then, are we, is this enough?
I think, because we don't want to pay subs more than we pay our regular staff.
So I, you can potentially get paid this to work in a quick trip.
Yes, but, so, for example, a starting hourly person, paraprofessional gets sixteen dollars an hour.
Plus benefits.
Yes, if they would, for full-time, so yes, they get benefits, but we just think there should be some differentiation there.
Do, like, yeah, just from the situation I'm familiar with, do a lot of these people share different roles, like?
That's pretty infrequent.
Bus driving is something that.
I, well, sometimes bus driving was something, because that's a different employer, it's pretty infrequent, people do different things within our district.
Right. So when you sub yourself for this one thing and.
That's, they have like a certain thing they like to do.
And it's usually on-call type thing, like, they call you in the mornings, say, hey, we're, we're short, you come in, and it's not like, hey, I need you for three weeks.
Yes. Yes. No, I mean, other than if someone had, like, medical procedure or something, we know, had, but typically, no.
Right.
Will this help clean up, like, was there different pay rates for someone helping with a custodian as opposed to someone helping?
For subs, it'll be the same no matter what, no, for our actual, if you are a custodian versus you are a classroommate, those are different. We did that when we did before, but just to make it simpler, if you're a sub, hourly sub, you're an hourly sub.
So whether you're doing the office worker, custodian, it's.
Right, because some of that is just for an efficiency standpoint.
That'll probably make your job easier. Trying to figure who's, who worked on what.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, last one, I need a.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Becca, need a second? Second by Donna? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
I do have a little bit of background in here. I didn't, I didn't, actually didn't realize until you said that, that, that I had realized that. I know we were up in the tree standing yesterday with wind blowing, my son's out, we're just kicking the height here. So there's up in the stands sneezing, blowing, so I'm like, when deer comes in, it's gonna be a miracle.